Hello beautiful people, welcome back to another livestream. So today, we'll be continuing our series of Japanese learning and we are learning Hiragana right now. Actually, we have completed Hiragana in most of the part. But today, in this stream, our goal is to revise everything which we have done till now. And I think, let's just wait for a few seconds and a few seconds and then, let me see if my stream is working fine. I think it is. Okay, so how are you guys doing? How is your week going? Let me know. I think we did one table, entire table of Hiragana, which was the important one. And we are left with a few things in Hiragana and then we can wrap up Hiragana today itself. And from tomorrow, we can start with Katakana. Yes? You guys with me? Okay. So right now, we have done a lot in Japanese and doing a lot means practicing a lot as well. So we will be practicing again and again every day. And I promise you guys, the first thing we'll do when the stream starts, is that we will be revising everything we did in the previous streams. So that consistency, that practice of writing those things will make a memory fresh and it will make it easier for us to remember the Japanese words and how to pronounce them, how to write them down and how to, I mean, just to learn the language better. Yes? I think we should start? Okay, here we go. Okay, so. Okay, we are good to go. So. So if you have joined me in my previous streams, so this is our resources section and this is page. We have been using it for a while now. And these are the resources section and these are the list section for all the newcomers. So we are doing Hiragana right now. And Japanese language has two scripts importantly, which are Hiragana and Katakana. And right now, we are tackling both of them in this first phase. And I made an year plan to do the N5 level. But we'll be completing this N5 level in less than a year. And but yeah, the maximum we can get is a year. But we will be completing this in a year and before. So we'll be first doing Hiragana and Katakana, then we'll be practicing the pronunciation and then we'll be tackling N5 vocabulary, Kanji and grammar patterns. So that is our schedule as you can go through. And there are some tips available for you and there's a list of things we'll be focusing on as well. I mean, wait, I think there is some. Okay, it's fine now. So yeah. Hi Akshit, how are you? Welcome to the stream. So yeah. Let me open all of those things we need today. Again, we'll be revising everything from the start, which we did in the previous streams. And. This was a booklet we referred to practice. These are the guides we refer to learn Hiragana and we'll be referring to learn Katakana as well. And yeah, and this is the tool we use to practice on. So these are the previous practice sessions. Right? You guys with me? I'm good, what about you? I'm good, I'm good. I'm doing perfectly fine. I'm so sorry I wasn't able to stream yesterday and the previous day as well because I was completed by some task and I wasn't able to stream. I wanted to stream but I wasn't able to, I'm so sorry. But here I am today. So how are you guys? What's up, what's up? Okay. I think let's wait for a moment, let everybody join in and let's talk for some time maybe. And please let me know if this is mic, if this mic is better than before because I'm testing on new earphones. These are GPL earphones. So I'm testing new earphones right now. I'm not sure if this is better than the before one. And I mean, if you feel like it's not better and it's a little bit worse than the before, I would change them right now. If it's good, then we are fine. Okay. Completed my Katakana alphabet yesterday. Oh, that's nice, congratulations. I mean, yeah, we'll be tackling Katakana from next week, I think. Tomorrow also, we can start from tomorrow but yeah. I think Katakana will take less time this time because we know the how the flow goes in learning those alphabets and how we should be practice. So yeah, I think Katakana will take less time. But we'll dedicate more time to practice those things and to learn them better. I mean, practice is the only thing we have to do every day to learn this language. The pronunciation practice, the writing practice and to know the alphabets and how they are used in words, we'll be doing that also. Yes? Okay. Hmm, so I think you guys are familiar with this thing. This is the whole chart of Hiragana, the important one. And today, we'll be revising this chart and also this table itself, we will be doing that. I mean, this table and this chart is so similar. I mean, this is just the some few sounding words which are being used in Hiragana. This is not just, this is not important as of now but we'll be tackling this, but not this part. So right now, we will be doing this table and this table, but not these two tables. And this is the most important table which we have covered, which we had covered, which we have covered, but this is the table we'll be covering today after revising this one, okay? Katakana words are a little bit complicated to remember as they sound same as the Hiragana. Oh, I mean, okay. Okay, if they are difficult, I mean, we have to get more time to every alphabet, okay? We'll take, we'll be giving every much every time. I think every time dedicated to learning the basics of alphabets, I think it's worth giving it. I mean, we have to give some time to learning the basics alphabets first, then we can move forward. Because if we mess up the first time only in the initial stage of learning our alphabet itself, then I think the base, if the base is not strong, I mean, I regret my point. If the basis is not strong, moving forward will be a waste of time and we'll be getting difficulties in the other stages as well. So I mean, we'll be dedicating enough time to learn Hiragana and Katakana and to practice them regularly so that our base is clear, then we can move forward with ease. So that is how I approach things up. I mean, our base should be really strong. So. We'll be tackling Hiragana and Katakana again and again in every day's classes so that we are very, very accustomed to these alphabets and how to pronounce them, how to write them. I mean, if someone says like, what is A and E or K? So we can, we should instantly remember those words and how to write them and how to pronounce them. That is how we should learn them. So yeah, we'll be covering everything. The only difference is about writing. Yeah, I think, okay. So Katakana words are complicated to write, I mean. Or are they similar to, similar but sounds are different. So we'll see about Katakana, I mean. Let's just finish Hiragana right now and we'll be tackling Katakana tomorrow. So yeah. I mean, just let's just revise everything once again from this table. Maybe from this table, I mean, let us revise everything with it and we'll be practicing once again the whole table itself. So that is how I think the things will go right now. So we'll be practicing, we'll be revising this whole again, okay? You guys with me? Okay, let's just get started. So. So the five consonant vowels were R, E, U, A, O. I think I'm pronouncing it correctly, R, E, U, A, O. And this is how they are written. So just remember the strokes, like first stroke is like this, second stroke is like this and third stroke goes around like this. And then E, there are two simple lines. And U, then we have a, okay, let's just also remember the mnemonics we use to remember these words, these alphabets. So R, we used letter A only because there is a hidden letter A inside the alphabet. So there's a first strike, second strike, third strike and there's a hidden letter A, you can see. So that is how we can remember that. You can't leave the ya, yu, yu column which combined with I, alphabet or every row or column as would be basic for speaking and understanding Japanese phrases. I think we did ya, yu, ya, yu, yu, sorry. I think we did that, here. We did that. So we have done that previously. So we'll be revising everything once again, but we have covered ya, yu, yu. I mean, yeah, these ones are, I mean, the ones given in this chart are really important. Every other thing comes secondary. I mean, this is the most important chart, the first chart, this is the most important chart we have to cover in Hiragana. Then we can move forward and cover this and not this right now, but we'll be covering this. But this is the most important thing we have to cover in Hiragana. Okay? Yeah, so let's just revise everything once again. So R is a, alphabet A is a mnemonic and this is how it is written down, first strike, second strike, third strikes. These strikes are used to write them down. I, it is, it is mainly used a mnemonic eel. Like these are two eels in this alphabet, two eels. And this is how it is written, first stroke and second stroke. Okay? Check the words Q and GU, I'm talking about that chart. Oh, Q and GU. You are saying this one? Oh, I think I did mess up. This is Katakana chart. I mean, you are saying this one, Q and GU. Q is. Here is Q. And Q is here. I mean, you have to do this as well. I think let's just focus on this, I think if this block, well, we are referring to this block from the starting. If this block recommends us to do these, I mean, let us see how it, here's the chart. I have to understand phrases. Okay. So you want me to cover these charts as well, so this is an important chart. Okay, we'll be covering, okay, then we can cover that as well. So after U and Ra, what did it cover? So it covered Wa and En. So that is what we have covered in now. So Datan, Dakutan and Ha, Ha, Dakutan, we have to cover right now. It is Ka, Ki, Ko, Ke, Ko, Za, Zi, Zu, Ze, Zun. So Handukutan and Dakutan, I think I'm pronouncing it correctly, we have to cover right now. Handukutan and Dakutan. So today, we will be covering this, I think, first. Then the Da, the Do, the Do is there and then Ba, Pa is there. Ba and Pa is here, I think. Where is Ba and Pa? Ba, Ba is here. So yeah. Dakutan practice, combination of Hiragana. Oh, so we have to cover this as well. I mean, it will be following this block only. I mean, this is the source which we are following for Hiragana, so I mean, yeah, they are covered. It's my bad, my bad. So they have covered this also. So I think we have to cover this, I think. Okay, we'll be covering this also then. So after this, we'll be covering this, okay? We'll covering, we'll be covering everything in Hiragana. So yeah. Okay, we'll be following this block, so we are following this block from the starting. So as we are following this block, so this block is recommending us to complete that as well. So we will be completing all the charts, this block is telling us to complete, okay? Okay, then we'll be completing this as well. I mean, yeah. So we are following this block, so we'll be completing that as well. Okay. So we'll be started from this, after we have revised the entire thing, once again, okay? R, E, U for Onokar, the mnemonic was Onokar as you can remember and then this was the first strike, this was second strike. Egg was a mnemonic for AE, U, A, A for egg and this is how it is written. Ultimate of Z and a stroke like this. Okay? And then Orikami, like we have an O. I mean, for this, we can remember this using an O inside this alphabet only. So there are two Os present, so that is how we can remember that. So these were the mnemonics we used to remember these alphabets. An egg, an eel, an Onokar, an egg and an Orikami word which has an O in it, that is it. Okay, moving forward, we had Ka, Ki, Ko, Ke, Ko. Ka was an insect, it was like a body, legs and insect. And it is written down like, a stroke like this, a stroke like this and a stroke like this. Right? Ki was a key, the mnemonic was Ki itself and we used to write like this, as you can see. Okay? Ku was a bird's beak, so it was Ku here, the bird's beak and this is how it is written down. Ke was a keg, I mean, I should mention here as well. So it was, so this was. Okay, so this was a key. So the mnemonic we used here was a key. It was a bird's Ku. It was a keg as a container. And then we had, okay, we had a Ko as a coin. So this was a coin we used to remember this. Okay? Yeah, so we just use a coin to remember this. That is how they are written down. Okay, then we came to Sa, Shi, the first exception, Sa, Shi, Su, Se, So. Sa was a salsa bowl, hands coming from both the sides, a spoon and a bowl. So that is how it is written down. Shi is a girl, Shi for a girl and her hair looks like this, so that is how it is being written down. Su for soon, soon like, soon the sprout will come out from the earth's ground. So this is the earth ground, this is the sprout which is coming out. So that is how we can remember that, okay? Say for saying something, when a person is saying something and when a person says something, so it, his mouth looks like this, here's the lips and here's the teeth. So that is how it is being created, okay? So that is how we can remember that. Then So for soda and that is how, there are the lips and a soda can, there are the lips and the, and a lip. So this is a nose and a lip and a soda can can be imagined over here. So there's a mnemonic and the alphabet itself. Then we had Ta, Chi, Su, Te, To. Ta, there were two exceptions, Chi and Su, Su and Te and To. Ta was a, the mnemonic for the word Ta was Ta only because we had a Ta inside the alphabet. So this is how it is written down, first stroke, second stroke, third stroke, fourth stroke, like this. Cheese, the word itself says cheese when you smile, when you says cheese. So it's look like this when you smile, so there are two eyes and nose and a mouth, like this. Su for tsunami, so we have tsunami here like that. Telescope, Te, Ta, Chi, Su, Te, To, Te for telescope and a hand and a telescope over it, like this. To, a toe and a nail over it, like that. So that is how we can remember that. Now, moving forward, we had Na, Ni, Nu, Ne, No. Na, so this was a complicated one, there was not a good mnemonic to remember that. But Na for not can be, we can use that and a guy holding a rope like that. So a guy holding a rope like that and that is how we can remember that. Ni for a human's knee, so that is how we can remember that, a knee like that and that is how it is written down, first strike, second strike and third strike. Nu for noodles and chopsticks and a noodle inside it, that is how we can remember that and that is how it is being written down. Ni, Ne for knell. Knell is a kind of a rope, a fishing rope, so a person is holding a fishing rope. I think knell is a fishing rope, I think so. I think, okay, I mean, I think there is a fishing rope and a person is holding the fishing rope itself. No for no stop sign, that is how it is being written down. Moving forward, we did, we did Ha, He, Hu, Ha, He, Fu. So the full exception is here, Ha, He, Fu, He, Hu. Ha and the mnemonic was Ha itself, the H and A itself. So we have this, like this, this and A itself, so that is how it is being written down. He for hehe, we are smiling when we are doing hehe. So that is how it is being written down, a smile itself, that is how it can be remembered. Fu for a fool, when, so we, so there are two ways to remember that. There was a mnemonic as a question mark and opposite question mark, so there's a question mark opposite way and the inverted commas or we can see a fool dancing on the stage floor. So this is a stage as you can see and this is a man dancing, so that is how we can remember that. He for heaven, a mountain itself. Ho for ho ho and a Santa Claus with four arms is holding a stick. So that is how we can remember that. So we, then we came to Ma, Mi, Mu, Me, Mo. Ma for mom with four arms, I think that's a wrong, I think, not a good mnemonic but we can remember that like this. And Mi for me, Akmer Tivon, so that is how it is being remembered, like it does have two and a one. So we can see a two and a one inside that. Two, one, can remember that like this. Mu for a cow and the cow's head and the body like this and this is a, I think, we should remember that by practicing, Mu is not a good mnemonic, but we can start with that. So Mu, a cow's head, his body, his legs, just like that. I mean, there's a good, not a good mnemonic for this one at least. Then Mei, Mei for like when you make a mess, Mei, mess. And then a person is watching when you're making a mess, so that is how we can write that. Eye, can you can see, it is forming an eye shape, so that is how we can remember that. An eye and then eye rose itself, so that is how we can write that. I mean, now then we have Mu, Ma, Mi, Mu, Me, Mu, Mu for more and then when we have a fishing rope, we have a hook inside that and inside hook, we have two fishes captured, but then we are asking for more fishes. That is how we can remember that, that in a hook, we have two fishes, two fishes, but then we are asking for more fishes, that is how we can remember that. Then for rabbit, then Ra, Ri, Ru, Re, Ru. Ra for rabbit and then rabbit, I think, there's a rabbit's body, there's a rabbit's head and an ear. That is how we can remember that. Ri for reeds and when reeds are inside the grass, so reeds for Ri for reeds. Ru for a root, we can remember like a root is forming inside a tree. So that is a tree also, there is a root also. I think there's a good, not a good mnemonic for this, but Ru for root and you are looping inside a root, that is how we can remember that. Re for rain and maintenance rain, the rain drops fall, the lightning comes, so a raindrop and a lightning bolt, like that, okay? Row for rolled and when we roll a dice, we rolled a three number, that is how it's written like three. Row for roll and the three we came for and that is three. So then we have left with two columns, two main tables. Then we have Ya, Yu, Yu, Ya for a yard. So you can, you can see, there's a ship, there's a rowing boat, so there's a, what do you say? The thing we use to row the boat with or I mean, you could say a hook as well. So inside a yard, we have a hook and a ship heads, so that is our Ya. Yu for U-turn, there's a U-turn inside and can remember that using a P also, P and a strike down. It's your choice. And Yu for, we remember it, use it like, we had a finger and the Yu, Yu attached to it. We had a finger and then Yu, Yu attached to it, okay? Then Wa, Wu and En. Wa for vasp, I mean, we can see a body of vasp like that forming, it's not a good mnemonic but we can remember that like this. Wu for Wu, I mean, when we, when we just speak Wu, I mean, we just bounce over an obstacle. So there's an obstacle and a person bouncing over it, jumping over it, so we can remember like that. And N for, that is N only because it's forming an N letter. That was your whole Hiragana's first table, the most important table, okay? I mean, let's just start practicing with it or I mean, let's play a game. I mean, let's just start with new alphabets and let's keep the practice, I mean, we have revised everything. Let us practice the whole chart once again at the end of the stream and let's see how much we can remember that then that way, okay? So let's just do that at the end. Right now, we'll be continuing with our Hiragana series and we need to continue with doing these alphabets right now. The G, the Zed, D, P and B, B and P, okay? I mean, okay. So we'll be doing this table now, okay? You guys with me? So let's do this table right now. Okay. Dakutan and Handukutan. So that is all, but we are starting right now. Shall we start? Yeah, you can start, I think. Okay. Okay, give me a second, I mean, let me see if everything is working fine. Give me a second. Okay, everything is working fine. Let's just start practicing the details one, okay? Okay, so Dakutan and Handukutan. Dakutan is a symbol that looks like this, so what is it like? It's a two inverted commas, it looks like an inverted comma. So Dakutan is a symbol that looks like an inverted comma as now, right now and looks like a double quotation mark, right? So the Dakutan symbol marks Hiragana from certain consonant columns. So Dakutan columns marks Hiragana from certain consonant columns and changes the pronunciation. It turns the consonant into a voiced or vibrating sound which just means your vocal cords vibrate when the sound is made. Let's take a closer look on the, at each of, so that you know what I mean by that. So I mean, what it's saying is, these are the words, so Dakutan, make your vocal cords vibrate when you speak them. So it's, it's a characteristic of the Dakutans. So Dakutans like. So dakutuns like ga, za, da, ba and pa, okay? Luckily for you, there are only five rows of dakutun kan, in kana to learn. And all of you have to learn is what the sound changes. To since you know the kana already, let's go over each of those dakutun transformations. So I mean it's the sim- symbol, the letter is the same, but just the way we pronounce that. I mean, just the way we pronounce that, that changes mostly, okay? So the way we pronounce that is, every kana in the, this column, this was. So let's just remember this one, this is. Uh if you can remember that, this was, I mean yeah, this was ka. Ka for an insect, as we remember it, and it looks like an insect body, right? So in ka, so ka in Japanese uh goes for an insect, so we remembered it using the word ka. So it's a ka, uh so every kana in the ka column can have a dakutun. When this happens, the ka sound becomes ga sound, ga sound, G sound. K sound becomes G sound, so ka sound becomes ga sound. Let me hear that once. Ga, so when this comes, it becomes a ga. So ka becomes ga, ki, that ki has been remembered, so ki becomes. Ghii, so ki becomes ghii. Ku becomes. So ku becomes gu. So what we are doing is, we are uh replacing those key words with a G word. Go is placed by go. Go, so if you say go, we, our vocal cords are not vibrating, but when you say go. Go makes our vocal cords vibrate a little bit. So that is how the sound changes with a certain dakutun. And we see, you see dakutun is just a two line symbol. That's a dakutun, so when we write like this. So let me write like this, let me increase the stroke, so we write like this. So this was a key, we used to write down, but those are key alphabet, yeah? So this was a key alphabet, so when we write it like this. With two dakutuns, so sorry, it's a one, it's a dakutun. So when we write a dakutun, it's a one dakutun, it's not two dakutuns, sorry, but it's a one dakutun, so when we write a dakutun. So this is dakutun. Daku and the spelling is dakutun or dakutun. Dakutun, I mean add a dakutun, uh so it forms the word ghii. So it pronounced, it is pronounced like a ghii, not ki, it's a ghii. The vocal cords are vibrating right now, okay? So that is how it is being pronounced, so this is dakutun, which we are doing right now, okay? Ga is, ga is ga, ki is gi, ku is gu. Ke is ge, oh, I know, know that. And ku is go, okay? And that is how it is being pronounced. Ga, gi, gu, ge, ko, okay? Let me just hear how they're pronounced once. Ge and then. Go, so that is how they are being pronounced. Ga, gi, ku, ge, ko. So it's placed, it's placed just, ke, ka word is being pronounced as a ga word, the vocal cords are vibrating right now, so that is a dakutun for you. So because you know the, this one, so that is a key. Sorry, this is a ka, sorry, this is a ka, because you know ka column already, all the, all you have to do is. Just pronounce the ga to ga, we just have to replace ka with a ga right now. Think of this way, car runs into a guard trail. So ka, you know ga, ka is pronounced with a ga. So this was a key, key is written like a ghii. Because of that, keys, so keys were known as a ghii when dakutun is present. So this is a dakutun for you, I'm assuming, so this is dakutun for you, okay? We're good till now, any issues? So when something from, uh this is. So what is this? Uh this is, I think so, sa, this is a sa, I think. Is it a sa? Yeah, this is a sa, so when something from the sa columns get dakutun. So when, so from the K column, the ga column, when somebody gets dakutun, it's a ga. It converts to G, but when something from sa column, the S column, converts to a dakutun. It changes to Z sound, so sa to za. Ka ku ka, so ka to ga, sa to za, with an exception of this. So in she, it is she, not si, it's a, it's an exception. So it's she, so with the exception of she, which is already an exception, so this makes sense. So although uh this sounds like a G, but it's Z, okay? So it just looks like a G, it's Z. It's, it's a Z sound. Okay, oh sorry, I'm sorry, sorry, it's a G, not a Z, so it's often now it's like Z, it's a G. So what I believe is, it's like sa, she, su, se, so. And this is ja, ji, za, sorry, za, ji, zu, ze, zo. So exception here, exception here as well. So dakutun is also forming an exception. I mean, uh for an exception, the ones who pronounce it, uh pronounce differently. The exceptions are also remains an exception in dakutun, okay? So sa, she, su, se, so gets converted to za, ji, zu, ze, zo with dakutuns, okay? The same goes for other combination Hira Kana that uses this. Use either J or Z, or J or Z for typing characters like this. For example, so this is a sa, we convert it to za. And how are they pronounced, let me hear that once. Za, this is that sounding word, za. So sa is pronounced as za, si, she, not si, si was an exception. She is pronounced like G. G, so uh sa, she, su, also known as zu. So se is pronounced like ze. Ze and zo, so is pronounced like zo and dakutun. So that is all, it is like that. So ka is pronounced, pronounced like ga and si, sa is pronounced as za. The exception remains the same. So all you have to remember is sa to za with dakutun. So you just have to remember the conversion, how they are being converted, the rest remains the same. So what we have done in, in a, in a sa, su, sa, sa, she, su, se, so. Whatever you have done, the alphabets, the how they are written, they are written the same way in za. Za, zi, zu, ze, zo, za, ji, zu, ze, zo, they are written the same way. But the only difference is, there isn't dakutun over them, that is it. And that is how you can uh remember that. I mean sa is pronounced like za and ka is pronounced as it ka. Ka is ga, the go, the go coming from your throat, vibrating go. So go is done, the no is done. So we are through with two columns, two rows right now. So we are done with two rows right now, okay? Guys with me? Okay, let's move forward. I just completed this table today itself, because it's nothing new, it's just how we pronounce them. That is new for us right now, okay? Okay, so. So my saw just zapped, sa, sa was za. Me when I tried to use it, okay, sa, za. So this is a sentence you can use to remember this, like how they are being converted. But it's a little bit easier one, so you can remember that using, without using a, a helping sentence. So without using a helping sentence, you can remember that, okay? So do you remember when with the K column, it's converts to ga? Do you remember what S column converts to za? What is the exception in the S column? So when you are able to answer that, all that, move on to the next dakutun set. So the exception in uh the sa was she and that is being converted to G, not Z. It's converted to G, that is how it being converted, so exception, we can hide, hide an exception also. So this one exception, oh sorry, not inception, but exception, this one exception. Inside the sa column, but it's been converted to, when it's being converted to a dakutun, it's G. And not Z, this is the right way. So that is how, you, what you have to remember right now. So we have done with two rows, next to the, move on to the next row. So it's time for another row, which is ta. So we have done sa, we have done ka, now it's ta. So ta kana changed to D sound, da. Ta, it's changed to da. So when you say da from your throat, it vibrates your throat, that's a dakutun for you, it vibrates your throat. So ta is being changed to da. So T column kana changed to D sound, except for the exceptions. So these are the two exceptions we studied inside the ta column, while the chi and the su. Cheese and tsunami, chi and su, those were the two exceptions we did in ta column. So remember the exceptions, now they are being pronounced in a different way in this, I think. So ta, ta here and dakutun over it will convert it to da. Ti, but that was, that's not a ti, it's chi. It was an exception, chi gets converted to Z. But if you're typing, you write ti. So exceptions are the ones which are pronounced differently, but they are written the same way. So when ta, it's converted to da, it's like di. But when chi, which is written T I only, but it's pronounced as chi, it's written like Z. So D only, but it's pronounced, pronounced like Z. So I'll make this clear, so when we write ta. So this was the ta, right? And when we write a dakutun ta, so. So this was a dakutun ta, so when it's converted to this, so when we write this, we write like this only. Ti and when it's converted to dakutun, we write di. But because it's an exception, it will convert, it will pronounce like chi. Uh we pronounce it like chi and this as Z, this is the pronunciation only. This is how we write and this is how we pronounce. This is how we pronounce, so there's a big difference between the two. So it's written like this, but it's pronounced like this, that's one thing. I would like to make it clear right now. These are pronounced like this, but it's written like this. So exception exists, but exception exists how we pronounce the word, not the how we write the word. That is what is being written down here, so it will be converted to Z but not di. So ta, chi, su, zu, not written like du, but it's pronounced like zu. Okay, then uh ta, chi, su, te to de, to to do. The two exceptions are pronounced, pronounced differently, but are the same. Let's just hear them once again. And do, okay? That was the third row for you, we have completed the third row as well. Now let's complete the last two rows and then we can take a short break, then we can return and practice all over again, okay? Okay, good, fine like me, fine, uh fine with this. Are you guys with me and if any doubt, you want me to, you want to ask? I can take a short break right now also, but I think let's just complete the last two rows and then we can take a short break. If it's good with you. Okay? Good till now, any problem right now? I think which concerns you, let me know. Okay, I think we're good till now, let's move forward, okay? So take a look at this, this. Si and zu again, although they are used to pronounce differently, like Z and zu. Nowadays, they are pronounced certainly like she and, sorry, that's a, that's for the she. But it's a dakutun right now, so sa are pronounced like sa, so Z. Not Z, but it's G, Z are not, Z are not pronounced, it's a G and. Uh it was a so to zo, so G and zo. So what they are saying is, sorry, zu. So the Z and the zu are pronounced like the same way, previous dakutuns. So however they're written from, they are used for sounds that over, uh. However, in written form, they are still used for sounds that originated from this and this. So bear in mind, if you want to type this and this, you will like di and du, not Z and zo. So that is what we uh talked here about, this is how we pronounce, but this is how we write. So there is a difference between the two, this is how we write, this is how we pronounce, okay? Okay, I think let's move forward. Do you remember the ta column changes to? Ta column changes to da column, think of this way, can say, ta da, the magic. Can learn this sentence as well, to remember how they are changed, how they can, how they be converted. But then I think there are very less amount of things to remember in this conversion. I mean there's no need of a sentence, can just remember sa to za. Ka to ga, ta to da, right now. That is what we have learned right now, okay? Let's move forward, do you remember that K column changes to, it changes to? Ka column changes to ga, do you remember S column changes to, it changes to za. And what do you remember by T column, it changes to da. So do you remember the three exceptions, yes? Da, she, it is to G, but it's written like Z. The chi and su are written like di and du, but are pronounced like Z and zu. So we all remember the three exceptions, if you are answer all those questions, let's move forward on the last dakutun set. Okay, so we are on the dakutun set, ba and pa, so these are the two left, okay? So the H column is a bit strange, so here comes the magic. The H column is a bit strange, it has two different kinds of symbols that can be applied to it. One is a regular dakutun, that code symbol you have shown, you have seen so far. The other is the handukutun, a little circle like this. So this was dakutun, but, but this is handukutun. I think this is how they pronounce, let me see, uh dakutun pronunciation. Uh let me see, how are they pronounced? Oh wait. Let me see, let me, I think I, I can't uh stream that, any of those sides. But I can show you how they are pronounced. Just listen. Dakutun, I think they have no loss like dakutun only, there is nothing new in that. Okay, so this is the dakutun and this is handukutun. So the last two set of the wor, the rows, we use handukutun as well. We can use handukutun as well, I think that's a thing they are telling us right now. This handukutun makes phonetically voiceless sounds like, unlike voice sounds like dakutun sounds. Your vocal cords don't vibrate when you make them. Handukutun only applies to H sounds and then turn them into P sounds, so it should be easier to remember. So as dakutun, when we pronounce dakutun, our vocal cords vibrate. But when we pronounce handukutun, our vocal cords don't vibrate, they doesn't make any sound. It's a voiceless, voiceless sound, they don't make any sound, it's just how we write them. Like that, I think that's what they are trying to tell, so it's a ba and a. So sorry. So it's a ba and a pa.
Ba. Pa, ba, pa.
Ba and a pa. So when they are being written like this, ba. So this is ha, ha is being converted to ba when you use dakutun. But when it's, when we use handukutun, because we can use handukutun inside the H column. So they can want it to pa, ba and pa. Okay?
Ba.
Ba.
Pa.
And pa.
Bi.
Bi.
Pi.
Pi. So this one which is he is being converted to bi and pi. With dakutun and handukutun. The word which is. Ha, he, who, who is converted to uh bu and pu. Okay? Then we have ha, he, who, he, he. Uh the morning for he was heaven, he, the hill, is converted to bi and pi.
Be.
Sorry, sorry, bi and he, bi and pi, sorry. Bi and pe. Pe, pe. And bo, sorry, ho is converted to bo and po.
Bo.
Bo.
Ho.
Bo. That is it. Okay? So you have to remember the H column, both have a bi and a P sound, but a pe. Think of this way, ha, 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 par, because you have drinking too much, say ha, 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 punches. So that is how we can remember that, but I think we don't need the exception in dakutun. Because dakutun can be used in any of those ka, ta, sa, ha. But handukutun is only used ha. That is how they have been written down. So we have turned dakutun with ka, sa, ta and ha. Ha, not N and, not N, ha, ka, ha, so ka, sa, ta and ha, we have turned dakutuns. Not with na, ni, nu, no, we have not done dakutuns with them. So, but we have done handukutuns with H also, ha, he, who, ha, he, fu, he, ho can be converted to uh handukutun as well. So imagine that, that story with you being the one saying ha, 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 a couple of times. Trying to get the details of it as possible, especially the details have to do with laughing, the bar and getting punched. So I think they are telling about the sentence itself. So to help you a little more, you can remember the P column is the one that uses the little circle. Why? Because the little circle is like, it's a fist that you have to punch, you. Okay? So this was a agbutan, dakutun and handukutun. So we have done ba and pa as well. So this is dakutun practice which we can do. But then we are through with these two tables. Congratulations. We are through with these two tables right now. We have done this table in the previous streams and this, it is similar table with similar symbols. But the only difference is dakutuns and handukuts. Handukuts can only be used with ha, which is ha, he, fu, he, ho. And we can use with them and we even use dakutun, it becomes ma, but when we use handukutun, it becomes pa. That is it. I think it's clear and now. I think we can take a short break right now because we have completed this column, this whole table. And while uh when we are back, we'll be revising both the tables. I mean, we'll revise how to write them. I mean, we are, we just see. We want to just revise how they are be converted to handukuts and dakutuns. The main thing to revise is the entire table of the Hiragana, which is the basic one. I think that is it for now. We'll be taking a short break and then after the break, we'll be practicing it once again. Okay? So be right back. So we are back. Okay, I think uh we're good to go. We are back with our break and we can continue learning. Hiragana, okay? Hmm, you guys with me? I mean, uh there's only one thing left in the stream. Our goal is almost complete. We just have to revise all of which we have done right now and after that, we're good to go. Because we need to learn Hiragana right now. And the only way we learn Hiragana is by practicing. And the way practicing is, is to write everything down once again. So we'll be practicing the entire Hiragana right now. I mean, there should be a workbook to practice that. But I think if there is not a workbook, we'll make our own workbook. I mean, uh I was yet to complete and make a, make my own workbook to, to Hiragana. But right now, I'll just, wait, let us make, just like, I'll share my screen as well. I'll make a small workbook for us, so that we can practice Hiragana once again. So let me down, let me write down all those things which we are yet to cover. Let me open this as well, right? I'm so sorry. Okay. So. We have to cover these things, right? Okay. The best way would be, I can write this, take a snapshot of this, but. Uh do we have a practice sheet for Hiragana? We can search that norm, then we can get a practice sheet for Hiragana as well. But there, there is a practice sheet for Hiragana. Can we have a practice sheet for entire chart? I think, is it available? A practice sheet for entire chart? Let me find that. This is good. It is covering everything. There is R, E, U, A, O, it is not, not covering everything. I mean, I need to find the sheet which is covering, I'm free. Let me, let me find that. Uh you can access these, I mean, you can access them live. I mean, I'm not sure if you can access them live. I need to check on. But let's um, let's make our own sheet. Let's make our own sheet only. I mean, uh by now we can. We, we would have made, we, we might have built our own sheet, but okay. Nonetheless, we make our own sheet. What we'll do is. First, we write all the alphabets. We are using R, E, U, A, O. Then becomes, then ka. Wait, let me close this. Then we had again. Ka, ke, ko, ke, ko. Then we had sa, then we had sa, yeah, we had a sa. Sa, exception chi, su, se, su. Then we had ta, right? Yeah. Ta, chi, su, se and to. But this is how we pronounce, but I think we write like T I, I think so, but we'll see. Ka, sa, ta, then na, right? Na, ni, no, de and no. And we are with ha, I mean, yes, ta, na, ha, ma. Ha, he, ho, he and ho. Then, wait, let me write like. Ma, mi. Mu, mi and mo. Then we have ska, sa, ta, na, ha, wa. Then we have. Ya, you, you. Then we have. Ra, ri, ru, ri, ru. Then we have wa, uh wa, wo, ta. And we'll be using this sheet, this uh custom-made sheet right now every time we practice Hiragana. Okay, let's just get started. So here we are, we'll be practicing everything once again. Okay, you guys with me? Are you ready? I mean, we can markers, markers also. I mean, uh if we are able to get fifty percent marks on this, I think we are passed. But let's just increase to sixty percent, I think, because we have revised uh the entire Hiragana in the starting of the stream. So I think we should make it uh fifty percent, sixty percent of marks. Let's see how much we are able to cover or learn or like, I mean, how much we are able to. Okay, let's just see how much we are able to remember without using mnemonic. Or let's just write down whatever we can remember just directly, without seeing anything. Okay, the first level. So what we can do is, let's just write down whatever we know in our mind. Without using any mnemonic, write them down right there. Okay, first one. So easy? So a stroke like this, a stroke like this, a stroke like this. Easy? 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 Oh, wait, let me just like, it was like. So this was an easy one, easy level. Let's move to level two. Let's just not think anything, but just write everything down, whatever we know. Ka, we don't remember. Ki, we don't remember. It was like this. Ku, we remember. Right? Ke, we do remember. Sorry, it was like this, like this, this. And like this. Go, we do remember. Move forward, we are not using any mnemonic till now. It was like this, it was like this, and it was like this. It was like this. It was like this, uh it was like, uh it was like this. I remember that, it was like this, this and this. And this was like so. So, no, I don't know. So let's move forward. We were not using any mnemonic right now, not using any mnemonic. Ta was like this, like this, and was like this. She was like this, this and this. Su was like this. Te was like. To was like. That is what we can remember till now, without using any mnemonic. I mean, yes, I can have a mnemonic in my mind sometimes, but I am not using any mnemonic, I am just writing them down, whatever I can think of. So I am not using any mnemonic, this is just by practicing. We are left with this and this, we will try to remember them by mnemonic, but till now, we are not using any mnemonic. Na, not remember anything. No, Na, Ni, sorry, Na, Ni. Wait, let me write them down like this. Nu, uh, I don't remember anything, Na, Ni, Nu, Ne. No, yes, I can remember that like this. So yeah, we can remember this only, without using any mnemonic. Uh, I can remember like. It was something like. Ha, He. Who. Something like this. He. Who was. He was. Not sure, what was he? Okay. Ma is, it was like, uh, Ma was like. Ma, I can't think of anything. Let me, uh, let me just focus, I am not using any mnemonic right now. Ma, as we remember, Ma was, what was Ma? Hmm? What was Ma? Ma was, I am not sure. Me was Bi, it was like twenty-one something? It was like this. Mo. Something like this. Not sure about this. Be, Mo, not sure about this. Ya, Yu, Yo, not sure about this as well. Ra, Ri, Ru, Re, Ro, Ra was. Not sure, I think, am I sure about this? No, not sure about this as well. Ra, Ri, Ru, Re, Ro, Wa, Wu, and, and like, was like this. It was something like this. Wait, it was like. Okay, so this is what we can remember without using any mnemonic. Now, let's just try using a mnemonic. So what can I think of? Ka. Ka, I can think of a knot. Ka was a knot, and a person was holding a knot, something like that. Right, it was like, it was like this, I believe. We'll check. So, Sa, Shi, Su says saw. Saw, uh, someone, uh, what was saw? I am not sure about saw right now, let's check. What was saw? Saw was soda, yes, now we can remember. It was like this, okay? Na, uh, I can't, I was not able to remember Na also, let us check what was Na. Na was, oh, Na was a knot, a person holding a knot. But then what was? What was an, uh, Ka, what was Ka then? Oh, Ka was an insect. I always forget this, I always forget this. So Ka was an insect. And it's a little like. Uh, it's little like this, this, and like, yeah. Anything else? A symbol like this. Like this, yeah? I mean, we've got a symbol here as well, a symbol like this, a symbol like this. This is correct, this is correct. Na was not, which we were, we forget, we just forgot. So it was like this, the first, for the first stroke was like this, second stroke was like this, and third stroke was like. Something like this. How did we make that? Let me revise it once again. It was like this, like this, and, uh, set. Do you get set? Something like this. I think we did make that only. Now it's done, what was Nu? Nu was noodle. Okay, so we should have remembered this, but like, okay, it's okay, it was like a noodle. Ne, Ne, what I believe is was a nail. What I did here was a knee. Wait, it was knee. Okay. Ha, He, Hu, He, He was, I think, a heaven, yeah. It had heaven, a hill inside a heaven. Ma, Mi, Mu was, Ma, Mi, Mu was something which we didn't remember. Ma was, what was Ma? Ma was, uh, mom, holding, what, kids? Something like this. Mu was correct, Bi was correct, Mu was almost correct. I mean, yeah, we did make a good progress. It was like this, it was like, the first strike was like this, second strike was like this, third strike was like this. That is how we wrote that. So, let me make it clear. First strike was like this, second strike was like this, and third strike was like this. Bi was, uh, and we see a mess around, and we see, we see I, it is like. Uh, wait, it's like this, like this, and like this. Certainly like this, right? But it's certainly like, in a full circle round, like this. And Mu, in the end, was more and more fish inside a loop. Okay? Two fish inside a loop. Ya, Yu, Yo, it's a tricky one, I mean, yeah, we can, Ya was a Yaj. And it was like, like this, like this, and like this. The first strike was this, second strike was like this, third strike was like this. If you can remember that. Yu again was a U turn, but not really you can remember that. I mean, it was like this. It was like this. And Yu was a yo-yo on a hat. This is a hat, this is a yo-yo portrait. Ra, Ri, Ru, Re, Ro, again, Ra being rabbit. So, what we do is, we make, we make a, uh, make the rabbit's ear, then we make its body. Just like this. Ri was reads, Ru was when you, uh, when there was a route, three routes, three routes. Re was something like raining, is a rain and a rain, a bolt, a lightning bolt. Ru was rolled a coin, roll a dice, and we got three. Then Wa was a wasp, it was like this, and like this. Here it was like, uh, here it's a curve, here it was a sharp like this. It's curved here. And Mu was a boy jumping over the obstacle. So, that completes our Hiragana, I mean, yeah. So, we practiced Hiragana, and yes, we did. I mean, I am not sure if our score was above sixty percent, how much we can remember, but yeah, I mean, we practiced it again and again, till we are able to memorize everything. So we were able to memorize a lot, and I mean, we did not memorize, we were not able to memorize a lot as well. So, it was a good try, I mean, we can try it every day and every single stream, so that we can remember that clearly. So I think we are good to go. So, we complete this, we completed this today. Tomorrow, we will be focusing on these two tables, and then tomorrow, we can wrap up whatever we done in Hiragana. So just, these two tables are left, three tables, okay? So, it was a nice day, we did a lot of things, we revised Hiragana, we did the Handukutans and Ka, and, we did Takutans and Handukutans, and we revised everything. So, that was a nice day. I mean, did you guys enjoy? And if you have any questions, you can ask right now. We are through with what we have to do in the stream. Now we can chat if we want. Right? Hmm, okay. So, how much time we are into the stream? Okay, we are already one hour twenty minutes into the stream. I think now tomorrow means day after tomorrow. I mean, I, I mean, it's difficult to stay consistent when you have an office in the morning. I mean, I had a call also. I mean, my office, my office work ended at nine P M. And I took a break of one hour and then I returned to stream as well. So I mean, right now, my office hours are being too late. I mean, nine, nine o'clock right now is a suitable time to get out of office, but, I mean, yeah. It's because of office, I am not able to stream sometimes, I feel so tired. I feel like he, I be, I, I can't do right now, so. But yes, I will try to stream. Uh, but yes, I think sometimes office schedule is so, so tiring. I am not left any, I don't leave, I think, there is no, any of my body cells allowing me to stream that day, when office work is so tiring. So, I just hope tomorrow's office work is less, and I completed soon, and then I come back to stream. I live in Delhi, I live in Delhi, Saratak. My office is in Gurgaon, I live in Delhi, so I have to travel all day long. I mean, the four, four hours in a day goes in traveling. I have traveled three days a week, and two days are work from home. Today was an office, I did go to office today. So, how was the day Saratak? So you were there in the stream or you came right now? Did you get what we did yesterday? I mean, we are making good progress day by day, and I think we can complete Hiragana tomorrow. And half day, and, and, uh, next week, we can tackle Kathakana. That is what I believe right now, that's what I hope we could have, we can. But let's see how difficult is Kathakana and how much time we have to dedicate to it. But I think, yeah, we can complete Hiragana today, uh, tomorrow itself. Not much is left, only these two important tables are left, and we can complete that soon enough. I mean, some of them are joining words, I think. No, I think Mr. Today Class, oh, you can watch the recording as well, I mean, it's a live stream. It's a limited situation for you, you can watch it live, or you can see the recording as well, so. So there is no problem in that. I mean, just tell me, if this streaming time is too late for you. I mean, I know I can't afford this time only, but I can do very early morning, maybe in afternoon sometimes, but night is the only, uh, right now, the only time they have left for me to stream. I don't get too much time to stream. So yeah, that's why I took ten to eleven as the time, but it gets, it gets, it can steal it to ten thirty sometimes. But yeah, I, I want to maintain a ten to eleven stream daily. But let's hope we meet tomorrow as well. Today was a tiring day. I need to sleep after this. Okay, we will be covering after this as well. Okay. Kanji Study App is something I have to see. It's a good app, I think, Kanji Study App. Wait, can we can search over here? Uh, Kanji Study App, what is this about? Uh. I recommend this to help with the words we haven't learned yet, okay, this, I think this is for Kanji, so yeah. When we tackle Kanji, we will be using this app as well. Uh. Can we use any of those? I mean, we are using Tofuku's Log to Study. We can use Japanese Pod one-on-one, uh, log also. I mean, yeah, I can talk to these guys and I can use this as well. Lengo de arri lango, hmm. There is lot to go into. Okay. I mean, we need to find a good Reddit post for Kathakana as well. I'll find that. This was for Hiragana only, we will find something for Kathakana as well. Kathakana, Kathakana, uh, mnemonics. Let me search this. Uh, good mnemonics chart for Hiragana and Kathakana. So, this is something, okay, not this. Uh, is this person has mentioned Kathakana as well? Okay, mnemonic chart. Oh, I was spelling mnemonic wrong. Uh. After Hiragana, Kathakana, then I think we can start Kanji, right? Yes, I think we are good to go with Kanji, but then we have to practice some pronunciation of phrases also. Using Kathakana Hiragana. So using Kana. So we will be practicing some pronunciations, some phrases as well, so that our grasp on Kana becomes strong. That is what I, what I believe is the right way to pronounce and to, uh, to study the phrases itself, to, and to make it a habit, I mean, we should study phrases every day to, to learn Kathakana Hiragana again and again, and how to pronounce these words inside a word or sentence, how to pronounce them, how to write them. This is the most difficult part, how to write them and pronounce them in a language. So that is what we have to practice after covering the basic alphabets, this Kana. Uh, then we can start with Kanji. So I think we will do first pronunciation of phrases, and then we can start with Kanji. And five level vocabulary, I would say. Right? I'll find a good resource for Kathakana's mnemonic as well, like this, this was a good one. I mean, can I give a thumbs up? I'll long him to a thumbs up. Bhai aap grammar or vocabulary jhakaana, ki bhi stream karega na, haan, karunga. I will do that. I will do a stream for vocabulary, for grammar as well. Everything which is being mentioned in the schedule, I will cover that. I will cover everything I learned about, uh, Japanese. I mean, I want to learn Japanese on streaming only, so everything I will cover, I will try to cover it on stream only, so that you guys can watch, you guys can follow with me, and I do get a motivation of streaming and learning Japanese side by side. I mean, the only way I learn Japanese is through stream only. I open the stream, I learn Japanese, I practice it, then I close it. I don't over, open any of it, I opened that again. It's not like I revise it in the morning, I revise it in the evening, and just on stream I do that. Everything I learn about Japanese is on stream, by searching, by doing, by practicing, by pronouncing it again and again. That is how I practice right now. That is how I practice right now. I think. Uh. We're good till now? In the weekend I'm planning to stream something else, not Japanese. We'll see, we'll discuss about that as well tomorrow. I'm planning of some, planning to stream something else. Not, I'll leave Japanese on weekends, I'll not study Japanese on weekends, we'll do something else. We'll figure it out, but we can do. I thought I could play a game on stream, but gaming is a little boring, I think. And sometimes gaming is also making my P C go harsh. I mean, the F P S drops to sometimes fifty or sixty, so I can't play games on stream. So we'll do something else, we'll do something, we'll see what we can do on stream on weekends. I think it's, it's uh, it's late now, we should end the stream now. So you had, you guys had fun in the stream? I think we should end the stream right now. It was a nice stream. Thank you so much for joining. And I'll hopefully see you in the next stream. Bye bye, bye Saratak, bye Aksheth, thank you for joining the stream. Okay, I do have thinking how you can speak or stream without even no one watching. Actually I'm thinking how you can speak or stream without even no one watching, uh, I didn't get that. How I think you can speak or stream? We'll look at questions tomorrow, chalo, bye bye, good night. Have a good stream.